Can you have everyone take these seats, please? I'd like to call the meeting order, April 10th, year 2025. Ms. McKenney, please enter prayer. Oh, special intentions, do they want to have any special intentions? Mr. Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask that everybody keep in their prayers the following people. Former State Senator Robert Adley with the serious, with serious complications associated with back fusion. Johnny Koch, who is recovering from surgery associated with serious vascular infection. Rodney Wood regarding his test results for concerns of cancer post-surgery. Please keep them and your, and their families in your prayers. Thank you.
Councilwoman McKenney, everyone please stand, listen to prayer.
Lord God, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make impactful decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Councilman Branigan, please, please into the pledge. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. You have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Couple announcements and some updates. Monday of this week, the fire department held a new firefighter graduation. For the first time in a long time, I'm happy to announce that the Kenner Fire Department is fully staffed. Well, Chief Morris tells me this is the first time since he's been chief that has been fully staffed. And he said, actually, they're a hun, a little overstaffed. They're one, one hundred and two percent staff because of anticipated retirements coming. Also, last week, Fire Chief Morris, Chief of Fire Administration Dyer, Captain Deist, and Fire Association President Nick Zalba visited Pierce Manufacturing in Appleton, Wisconsin to make the final design of the city's newest fire rescue pumper. I believe they've gone back in November for the final expect, inspection, and it should be delivered at the end of the year or the beginning of next year. Also, the long overdue Duke Fire Street Station construction is well underway. This week, they poured all the concrete driveways, which took place overnight Tuesday and again, I think, yesterday morning. Also, on today's agenda, item 15G is an agreement for architectural and engineering services for a new two-story fire station on Williams and 24th Street. This will replace the one that was raised at City Hall. And staying with City Hall, the site is being backfilled now and should be totally finished, I believe, this week. Tomorrow, it should be finished, backfilling it, and it's just going to be an open area of dirt. The next step of the project consists of the design and construction of a new City Hall. The building, or buildings, will be approximately 60,000 square feet, inclusive of city departments, the mayor's office, council chambers and offices, and support spaces. This pre-design is inclusive of two phases, an evaluation phase and a community outreach phase. Phase one is evaluation, which is during Task One is make models of the proposed building layout, parking sidewalks. Task Two is a comprehensive program, a study of city departments to find out exactly what's needed. Task Three is concept plans. After the, after the city of Kenner and community have reviewed the site plan up options and determined how to best proceed based on a programming data during Task Two. Phase Two is community outreach. We'll have Meyer Engineering representatives come to a council meeting where we will discuss with the public, you know, what's the best way to go forth with what to build for City Hall. Also, on today's item, item agenda 15K is a contract for spread, spreading of fill needed for surcharging the amphitheater site in Lake Town. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with all those players, and this project is probably going to start as soon as next week. It depends on how they line up all their, their equipment and moving of the dirt, so that's well on its way also. And once again, I'm optimistic until I buy a ticket, I'll believe it. So, but we, well on our way of, of getting this done. Also, this week, we met with representative, representatives of Boyd, Boyd Gaming at the old location of the Trezor Chess Boat in preparation of the city to take over control of that again. So, I know we went back and forth this week with some, the agreement of what we want done. And once we have it done, we'll sign the paperwork and the city will be, take over the, that whole peninsula to the east of Williams Boulevard out over the levee. Kenner Discovery has a, their fourth annual Swamp Owl Bayou Jam this Saturday. Also, Divine Mercy has their Tailgate Cook-Off this Saturday, it's rescheduled, that's kind of why it's on the same day, I believe. There's a cruise night tomorrow night at Lake Town hosted by the Kenner Central Lions Club. And I'd like to personally thank the city employees and volunteers. This week, as you know, in Louisiana, through the Lieutenant Governor's Office, it is Love the Boot Week. City employees and volunteers cleaned up a lot of areas here in this city. And I'd like to thank, you know, my staff, who don't work very good in the heat, so I had to pick up their slack. But we concentrated on La Salle Landing, Butterfly Garden, AP Clay Splash Park in the Lake Town area, and Williams Boulevard coming out of Lake Town. And we will be off next Friday because, Councilwoman, it's Good Friday. Got it? And that's it, you, you're going to have the Megas at the end.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item One, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of March 28, 2025. Item Two is approval of bingo alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item Two A is a resolution granting alcoholic beverage permit to Driftwood Park Civic Association on March 17, 2025 at the Gladys Playground, 41 Nassau Avenue, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item Two B is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on May 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, 2025 at Rivertown, 2015, 4th Street, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item Three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item Three A is application 2447-25, Bonable Alumni Association to hold a public gathering on October 5th, 2025 from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the purpose of an alumni picnic at Veterans Park, 1900 Williams Boulevard. Item Three B is application number 2450-25, Driftwood Park Civic Association to hold a public gathering on May 17, 2025 from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the purpose of an annual family fest and fun run at Gladys Playground, 41 Nassau Avenue. Item Three C is application number 2451-25, Our Lady of Perpetual Health to hold a public gathering on April 20th, 2025 from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM for the purpose of Easter sunrise mass at La Salle's Landing, Williams Boulevard and 3rd Street. Item Three D is application 2457-25, the First Baptist Church of Kenner to hold a public gathering on April 13, 2025 from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of a family Easter fest at First Baptist Church, 1313 Clay Street. Item Three E is application number 2459-25, North American Midway Entertainment Amusement South LLC to hold a public gathering on April 17 through the 27th, 2025 for the purpose of community carnival at the Esplanade Mall, 1401 West Esplanade Avenue. Item Three F is application number 2460-25, the city of Kenner District Four Councilman George Branigan to hold a public gathering on April 12, 2025 from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM for the purpose of a spring fling and Easter egg hunt, grand reopening of Megast Park at 67 Barron Lane. Item Three G is application number 2461-25, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on May 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, 2025 from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM for the purpose of a Music in the Park Outdoor Concert Series at Kenner Heritage Park, 2015, 4th Street. Item Three H is application number 2462-25, city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on May 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, 2025 from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the purpose of a Movies in the Park Outdoor Movie Series, Kenner's Heritage Park, 2015, 4th Street. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item Eight, public hearings and final passage. Item Eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,751, an ordinance levying the annual tax millage rates for the year 2025 totaling 28 and 16 hundreds, 16 hundreds mills on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana on the 2025 tax rule. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to open your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Is there anyone in the public wishing to come forward and address the council on this matter? Please come forward now. Seeing no one in the public wanting to address, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero to close your public hearing. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat for approval. Councilmember Wilmot. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember McKenney to open because she motioned. I'm, I apologize, Councilmember Wilmot.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you, Council Chair. I just wanted to clarification from the, from Liz about, you know, if there's any change and if this, there will be any, like, basically, are we collecting more or what's the, what's the impact of?
Yep, so this is the same rate as last year, so we're not making any changes. It's not a reassessment year, so there's no roll forward, roll back situation. We collected a little higher than what was anticipated through the budget being a reassessment year last year. So, through February, we have received about 18.7 million in property tax collections. And, you know, that's all dedicated to each department's millage. But, yeah, so no change, same tax rate as last year, and it's not a reassessment year. So, no one should really be affected unless they have a, you know, case by case situation.
Councilwoman Wilmot.
Ms. Herron, if you will, just explanation for the record that this is, we're not voting on a tax, a new tax, per se.
No.
This is already funds that were collected.
Correct, so this is every year you have to levy the rate that's collected, but these were all taxes that the public voted on and passed, and we're just levying that tax up to what they approved us to levy.
Thank you.
One question I have, Liz, if you don't mind, I don't want to blindside you with this. Do we have any idea how much is owed to us at this point? I know the Esplanade Mall owes, owes, I know we got other outstanding properties out there that have back taxes.
Yeah, I can run a delinquent list and send to all y'all if y'all'd like to look at it. We, you know, we're bringing our 2022s to tax sale in September, but I can definitely show you a delinquent list. It's very minimal. We've actually been really successful in collecting these last few years. And everything that we do bring to tax sale has been going to sale. It's not been adjudicated to the city, which is a good thing. So, I can put something together, run a report and send to y'all. I just don't have that right now.
Fantastic, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item Nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. Item Nine A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,749, an ordinance approving the sale of an approximate 6,194 square foot portion of unimproved city of Kenner property between the right-of-way of Kenner Avenue and Lot 44-A-1 Centani subdivision, and to provide for the preservation of all access to all public utilities located within this portion of the city-owned property. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to open your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. We're now in a public hearing. The planning department has a presentation, and after that, anyone in the public can address.
Chris, you have the podium.
One second while I get my presentation up. Good evening, everyone. Chris Lewinsky, Director of Planning. This is planning case P-3124, the sale of city property. The applicant is Mr. Amar Deary of 431 Hollandy Street. And the sale is for an approximately 6,191 square foot portion of an unimproved city-owned property adjacent to Lot 44-A-1 Centani subdivision, which is immediately adjacent to 43, which Lot 44-A-1 is 431 Hollandy Street. Property is generally bounded by Hollandy Street to the east, the railroad and Kenner Avenue to the north, Centani Lane to the west, and River Richard Wilson Drive to the south. The applicant proposes to purchase the property, the subject right-of-way, to use as storage and vehicle parking for his existing business on the adjacent lot. Both the city of Kenner, Department of Public Works and Department of Wastewater have active utilities that are rented under the subject property. Therefore, the entire property will be a servitude for the city, and Mr. Deary has agreed to that servitude, which is included in the survey and the ordinance. No other utility companies had any objection to the sale. Just to clarify, if we ever need to work on the sewer line or upgrade the drainage or anything, he will have to give us access if he should pave over it. We will go in and break up that paving, and it will be his responsibility to restore it once we are finished. So, that is not really a concern. An appraisal was performed by Wayne Sandoz and Associates that was dated May 20th, '24, and the property value was assessed at $23,300, and the applicant has agreed to purchase that, to that purchase price. The planning commission heard this case and recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions?
Anyone else in the audience went into a... Councilman Wilmot, you want to address the planning director?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as the utilities that are on this sectional land, what specifically are they?
So, on the west side, there is an open ditch that flows into a, I believe it's a 21-inch drain line. And then, next to that, there is an eight-inch sewer line that runs the entire length of the property as well.
There's no other utilities of any kind, it's just those two?
Oh, well, there is an overhead energy transmission line, and Energy did not have any concerns with the sale.
Okay. You, you mentioned if it were to be concreted and used maybe for a parking area, that in that event, that we would have the authority to come in and we could bust it up if need be to get to the sewage and to get to the drainage, correct?
Correct, yes.
Now, doing that, I would presume that it would cost the city money to, to bust it up. We don't know what it would cost because we don't know what they're going to put there. But the concern is there that they would come in and concrete it and use it for some type of parking. And if that happens, then it would be, the onus would be on us, the city, to actually hire someone or for our workers to go in and bust it up, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, so that is a financial concern that we have there. And the sale price, you said it was 20,300, is that correct?
23,300.
23,000, thank you. 23,300, so we have a, we have some, some of an asset coming in, but it's not a whole lot considering the drainage. We have a 20, 21-inch drain line. Is that substandard or is that normal for that region or that area?
Councilwoman, I can probably answer that. I talked to Chris a little while ago.
Okay, please.
And I spoke with Joanne. Both the eight-inch sewer line and the 21-inch drain lines are proper for that area. And, and you are correct, if we ever have a problem or if we want to extend that line, because there is a dish there, whether the city extends the line or the property owner extends the line, then it would have to meet our requirement for a pipe size. But the eight-inch sewer line is proper at this time, and the 21-inch line is proper. And you are correct, if they do pave the area, number one, it's going to be costly for the property owner to pave the area. If I was the property owner, I would just put limestone in there. And if they want to close the dish, they're going to have to come to us with the proper pipe size, and they're going to, and we're going to have to approve, and they're going to have to install. Let's say they do pave the area, worst-case scenario, yes, we would have to go in there, we, the city, remove a section of that concrete, but normally, the type of agreements that we sign on situations like this one, the property owner will have to replace the area that the city removes. So, I think we, we find the way it is, this, you know, the utilities are proper right now, but in the event that we have to get in there, we have every right to get in there. Yes, the removal is going to be on the city's part, but the replacement is going to be, the way normally this agreement is set up, the replacement normally is the responsibility of the property owner.
So, the, so the 21-inch and the eight-inch, that's, that's standard for that area?
And it, it's good for that area.
Okay.
Right now, but if we ever have to increase that pipe size, we have every right to go in there and do it.
Do we have any, any inclination that we might be susceptible to, to any increases at this point in that region?
No, not, not to my knowledge, no. Not at this time.
All right, real good, that, that answers my question, so, well, I say that, let me look over my little list here. Here's, here's, here's another issue that may pop up. If there's a fence, if he erects a fence around that property, and it gives us, it'll, it'll actually box us out from having to be able to get to it when possibly need be for drainage and cleanouts and that type of thing. We would have to get permission from him to get into that fenced-in area, is that correct?
In, in all likelihood, if he's going to put a fence in there, he's going to have to go through code enforcement to get a permit, okay? And, and that's when the issue will be brought up. But, yes, we would have, whether there's going to be a fence there or not, you know, you know, it would be foolish for them to put a fence, you know, without an opening, because if, if they're going to use that for anything, it's going to be for parking. So, but let's say they enclose the whole thing. Worst-case scenario, the city has the right to go in there, okay, and address any potential issues with the sewer line or the drain line.
Okay, and as far as the, the price being 23,300, that's a fair price?
And that, I don't know, I don't have an answer.
That was the appraised value, yeah, as of May of last year.
Okay, I don't know if the appraisal looks at these drainage issues and, and so forth and the sewage, but it's, it may or may not, I don't know. Does it? Do we know?
Yes, it in essence looks at everything. That, that portion of land, most likely, you won't be able to build much of anything on it. And, like, any right-of-access, much like any energy lines that are in the rear of your property, there's a perpetual, there is a servitude of passage and use of that area, and that remains the same with this subject piece of property as well. Yeah.
And look, the only thing I want to add, yes, you know, it's a small area, it's X number of dollars. I think it's a good thing for the city because I, I don't think the lot, the, actually, it's probably not an actual lot size where you can build, okay? So...
It's right up against the ditch.
I think it's a plus-plus and eliminates the need for the city to maintain that area. The property owner would have to maintain the area.
Cutting the grass and so forth?
Well, there's not much grass, it's mostly limestone right now.
Limestone, okay, all right, real good. Thank, thank you all, thank you.
Is there any way out? Madam Clerk.
Seeing no further discussion, I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to approve. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids, we have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,772, an ordinance adopting a policy for the private sale of police dogs no longer needed for police work for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brendan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Any discussion?
Chief, you want to chime in on this?
So, customarily, this statute dictates how a government, a governmental entity is to alienate any property that's no longer needed for public use. It's always been a sensitive issue when you're dealing with a canine, you know, a police dog, because of the relationship between the handler and the dog. That, you know, that dog has lived with that family, that handler, you know, for probably 10 years as it's in service, and when it retires, it's been customary in the past that that dog goes with that handler for the rest of its life, and that handler, you know, wants that dog because they have that relationship, it's a labor of love. So, this was, from what I understand, this is a new, new exception or a new part of that statute, which basically allows municipalities to efficiently, effectively, flexibly deal with the surplus police dogs, potentially find them new homes with private individuals who can provide care and companionship. And that, an ordinance should be construed to dictate that, make it part of the police department's policy. So, we will continue with, you know, the practice of letting these dogs retire and go live out their life with the families they've grown up with, as well as let the families grow up with the dogs some of those children have grown up with, and it's a happy ending for everybody. So, this is just kind of some housekeeping that the city attorney brought to our attention based on the new provisions allowed in the statute. So, we're happy to take advantage of it and, you know, keep, keep these families together.
Great, Chief, thank you for the explanation. Councilman Lahat.
We're not selling Al Capone, are we?
No, Capone, you'll, you'll have trouble getting Capone away from, from his handler, but Capone's got a long lifespan ahead of him with the KPD, and this will make sure that, you know, when, when Capone is ready to retire, he's going to stay with that family.
I like Al Capone, great, great dog.
Thank you.
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution expressing the full support of the Kenner City Council in urging the members of the Jefferson Parish Legislative Delegation to support an endeavor to have enacted a bill to allow for the reconstitution of the New Orleans Aviation Board. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilmember McKenney.
Thank you, Council Clerk. I just wanted to, these, this, both of these legis, or 13A and 13B actually were discussed and presented by Councilwoman Arida Bohannon at the Jefferson Parish Council meeting last, yesterday, actually. Because I think, and I think it's important for Kenner to also discuss it and be in support of it, because I think, obviously, everyone knows that the airport is in Kenner. We have, the Kenner, Kenner residents are impacted by all of the wonderful, great things that, that the airport has to offer. But also, we have to deal with, you know, the pollution, the noise, the traffic, and also now flooding that's caused, been caused by the airport. So, I think that it's important that we have a dialogue, encourage a dialogue, encourage changing to, you know, to the board, the New Orleans Aviation Board. So, Kenner has a, Kenner and Jefferson Parish have a louder voice and more concern... and more concern on the board. I know this is just, you know, both of these are, you know, the start of discussions. I would hope that, I, I don't know what my colleagues think about it necessarily, but I think that it would be great for them to join, and also the mayor and the, and the police chief, on to encourage, you know, an open dialogue, a discussion, because I think it's really important that every Kenner resident knows that we are all in for support, that we have more say and more control over what happens at the airport. Because having one representative is great, but having, you know, more equal representation for Kenner is, would be a step in the right direction. So that, that's all that I have about this particular one. So if anyone else wants, would like to speak?
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman LaHatt? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm definitely going to be supporting this resolution. I'm glad Councilwoman McKenney brought this in conjunction with the Parish of Jefferson and Arida Bohannon. It's a huge shame that the Titanic, proverbial Titanic, has to sink before someone actually looks at the lifeboat situation. And the reporter, the engineer that came out, which was discovered by the news, that they had not tested that pump, Orleans, before Francine flooded West Kenner District Five, is incredibly awful. We had people in here that, that meeting after Francine who were out of their minds mentally, you could tell, because they had lost everything. They felt neglected and, and it's, it was just absolutely ridiculous. And, you know, I think it needs to go a step further. Since I've been in office, I was, I don't think, I was even alive when Orleans or the transfer of the airport went to New Orleans from Kenner to Jefferson back in nineteen, whatever it was, seventy-something. You know, the, the taxes and sales taxes we get from the airport, I've asked this question in the past, and some people know the exact answer. Sometimes it's convoluted as to what we get out of the airport with the, what Kenner gets, what St. Charles gets, what the Parish of Jefferson gets and what Orleans gets in terms of revenue. I want to dive into that at the budget meeting this year to, to get a clear answer on that. Maybe that has to be examined too. And while we're looking at the airport operations, I think we need to look at the economics of it and the money that comes out of it. You know, I, I know Orleans, through Latoya Cantrell, issued a statement stating that, you know, that there was, been a collective governance of the airport going back to the eighties. But it doesn't seem like that to me. They have four New Orleans representatives and one from Jefferson and one from St. Charles. And it's, I'm, I'm sorry. What's that? Eight, excuse me. Well, the representation is, the representation is not indicative of the, the airport being located inside the city of Kenner. I think the airport's great. I think they did a great job with the renovations. I love going inside of it. It's big, it's, it's a lot of space. And I think many of the travelers here come in and out of New Orleans and Kenner enjoy the airport. While we explore the legislature in terms of granting more power to the citizens of Kenner and Jefferson to govern what happens at the airport in terms of prevention of safety measures and floods, I think we need to look at the economics too, because in the, in the middle of our city, I want to know where the money goes, how much we get, and how that benefits the citizens as a whole. I think we need to look at that this year while this topic has, has come up. Because, you know, it, the pumps were not tested, an engineer looked at it, and West Kenner flooded. And Keith Conley and I were out there the next day looking at those people and they were just absolutely out of their minds. So this is something that needs to happen. I absolutely support the Parish of Jefferson and support McKenney's, Christie McKenney's resolution here. I wouldn't think any of us up here would not, but I think everybody else wants to speak on it, so I'll go ahead and defer to my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes, I, I'm supporting these two pieces of legislation, because basically, it has affected our residents and we cannot have the New Orleans style of handling flooding affect residents of the city of Kenner. I think that we need more representation on this board, because it would give us a little bit more control to know what's going on at the airport. Whether they're building new additions to the airport, controlling the flooding situation, having the pumps not work at the airport was, was totally unacceptable and we can't have that happen again. Now, if those pumps would have been working, how many houses wouldn't have got flooded? We have no idea. We don't have a crystal ball to get that answer. But I believe that the city of Kenner needs more representation and Jefferson Parish needs more representation to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, I agree with my colleagues in the comments. This is long overdue and it's really a good move by Councilwoman Bohannon. And for you to bring this up as well, Councilwoman McKenney, and as my colleagues have said, I'll be supporting both of these. It's very, very important for all the reasons stated. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to amend this item at the request of councilmember Wilmot. At the end of section two, it will read, "One member being a Kenner resident appointed by the Jefferson Parish District Three councilperson, one member being a Kenner resident appointed by the Jefferson Parish District Four councilman, and one member being a Kenner resident appointed by the Kenner mayor." That is an amendment that has been proposed by councilmember Wilmot and will be seconded by councilmember McKenney. Is there any discussion on this amendment at this time? Sure, at the end of section two, you will note, it will read, "One member being a Kenner resident appointed by Jefferson Parish District Three councilperson, one member being a Kenner resident appointed by the Jefferson Parish District Four councilperson, and one member being a Kenner resident appointed by the Kenner mayor." So we're just basically inserting that they would be a Kenner resident. This appointment would be a Kenner resident. You're welcome. Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you. This amendment, I'm offering it because I believe that we'd have three Kenner residents on the board if this were to, well, not just pass. It has to pass here, but it also has to pass in other locations as well, including the state. And I'm not sure if even the city of Orleans has their own approval process that they may have to undertake. But in any event, I would like to see this incorporated in our resolution, being three Kenner residents as such as we just read. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Nugent, would you like to speak on the amendment or after the amendment?
After the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I have one, just one. Mr. Mayor, will we lose Gregory Carroll as our representative now? Will we keep him, plus three more, or we're going to just have three total?
It would be four total, it would be four total, actually, because there's, it would be-
Three, four, and one from Kenner and Gregory?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Seeing no further dis, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Wilmot?
Point of clarification. This, this would say, or it says with the amendment, we have the District Three councilperson picking one, then we have the District Four councilperson, that's of the parish, picking one, then the, the Kenner mayor picking one of a Kenner resident. Currently, I understand that, that that is, Mr. Carroll is the appointee for the mayor. So this would give us a total of three.
Yes, it doesn't add, the mayor's in it already. It's adding two additional Kenner residents, so a total of three.
It says the Jefferson Parish president- Because the parish president has one?
Yeah, but the Kenner-
Correct.
Right.
This would give, the parish president, she would be able to-
She'd be able, she doesn't have to pick a Kenner resident?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Unless you wanted to add that in there as well, but-
We don't have to tell the parish president what to do? I'm fine with sticking it right here now.
Okay, I'll, we'll go with the amendment as read.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Back to your original motion as read by the clerk, as amended. Mr. Nugent, would you like to speak now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Nugent, fifty-four forty-four Erlanger in District Three. I'm actually just going to cite some numbers here to put this in some context for everyone. And it sounds like Councilman LaHatt was able to get a little bit further with his research than I was. I knew that the airport was established in the nineteen forties. I knew the old terminal, the oldest part of the old terminal was built in the nineteen sixties. I didn't know exactly when the state legislation that established the current aviation board was put into place, but I figured that was somewhere six years or seventies, I guess a decade too early. So my numbers are actually a comparison of census figures from two thousand, excuse me, nineteen sixty to twenty twenty. In nineteen sixty, the population of Jefferson Parish was two hundred eight thousand people. In twenty twenty, it was four hundred forty thousand people. In nineteen sixty, the population of Kenner was seventeen thousand people. Population in twenty twenty was sixty-six thousand people. In nineteen sixty, the population of St. Charles was twenty-one thousand people. In twenty twenty, it's fifty-two thousand people. The population of St. Tammany Parish in nineteen sixty was thirty-eight thousand people. And their population in twenty twenty was two hundred sixty-four thousand people. Or, city of New Orleans, on the other hand, their population in nineteen sixty was six hundred twenty-seven thousand people. Their population in twenty twenty was down to three hundred eighty-three thousand people. The point being that the region has trained, changed drastically, dramatically over the course of the last fifty or sixty years since this legislation was put in place. And now, it goes without saying that, you know, the city of New Orleans shoots way outside of its weight class in terms of the number of people through cultural tourism in the city of New Orleans itself that it brings to the airport. But every single person in this room who's ever used the airport is not in that number, we're in the other number of people who just live here and use the airport. And as, you know, as the council members have noted, you know, have to deal with the, the benefits and drawbacks of having the airport right in our backyard. So in short, I, I fully support this resolution. I don't have anything to say about the particular makeup or composition of the board, but I do think in general, a reevaluation of that is long overdue. So thank you very much.
I just would like to make a procedural note. Having served in the legislature myself for many years, there are cutoffs and deadlines for filing legislation, especially if it's during a fiscal year or non-fiscal year. This being a fiscal year, because it's an odd year, and it's twenty-five. So being an odd year, there's limitations as to the bills you can file. And in this case, there are five non-fiscal bills that can be filed. The deadline for those non-fiscal bills, I understand, for the pre-file deadline is April fourth. And the actual filing itself in, in the House or Senate is a, I'm sorry, April first and April fourth are the deadlines. April fourth is already, both of those dates have already passed. So it is a concern whether or not anybody filed any legislation regarding this subject matter at this point. We don't know that. My limited research indicates anything on the airport, I see four, five bills having been filed, but none of them actually regarding this issue. Then also, some of the other legislature, legislators, I checked, I didn't see anything. However, there could be a local bill having been filed. I, I did not research that, but it certainly doesn't come up under the word airport as a key word. So I don't have a whole lot of confidence that a bill has been filed. But if it has, I certainly hope so. And I think it's important that we pass this legislation in any event to show our support. I just wanted to make that clarification for the record, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, as you could, what the public doesn't know is this was also changed here tonight. Who it's submitted by, all councilmembers, Mayor Glazer and Chief Conley. So we're all in support of this. As I said a few council meetings before, I tried to get movement on this in the summer of last year, in the email trails, we were actually in October. And coming out of the city attorney's office gave a pretty good background on how we got to this. In nineteen eighty-four, Louisiana Supreme Court case pretty much dictates what we do now under Francis versus Morel. And that led into a nineteen eighty-five CEA with the three parishes, Orleans, Kenner, and, and Jefferson Parish doesn't have a, in, in St. Charles Parish, about the makeup of the current system. They serve five-year terms. Just to tell you that, just the appointment on this, this board for me was, I bring it in front of y'all, y'all agree on the three names I sent to the mayor, and fourteen months later, they finally make a decision. So that's how, they, they can't even pick a, pick a person, more or less we're on a large airport. So we need more, more people on this board that, with local representation. Not just one person from Kenner or Jefferson Parish, one person from St. Charles Parish, that have no effect on this board, because it's weighted all out of New Orleans. It's governed under the New Orleans Home Room Charter. Like, I'll follow you this email if you want, and you can see the whole background and all the attachments that Eric in the city attorney's office put into it. And pretty much, because, and it came to a standstill where unless there were some outside forces, with this flood, is, and the pump's not working, there's some leverage we now have that it's not just New Orleans and their home room charter is going to run it, so. But it has to go through Baton Rouge, the revised statute two colon one thirty-one point one was found unconstitutional, unconstitutional in that Francis versus Morel. So that's when it kicked off. It did change some, the makeup of the powers of the board and things like that. But unless we have some compelling argument that we need to have more outside, this Supreme Court case is pretty much what governs it.
Well, Mayor, if I may interject, I, I think possibly the delay in that taking fourteen months was at the Pinalba, they don't have cable or internet, and she may have been out of the country as well, so. Had to get that one.
Councilman Wilmot?
Mayor, for clarification purposes, the, what you just spoke of, is it, is it, the, the state law would govern over the home room charter of the city?
No, well, there, if you look at the statute, the two colon one thirty-one point one, it was found unconstitutional in this Francis versus Morel. It's the makeup of the board, is what it is.
So it's the makeup of the board?
Yes.
But what about, would the city of New Orleans Home Room Charter prime in that instance?
Yes, in this, yes.
That's what I was wanting.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification, thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add is, I hate to, like Councilman Wilmot said, we don't have anything filed, or we don't think we have anything filed yet for this legislative legislation, but I like to get our ducks in a row first. And if it takes thirteen months to get it right, so when we're ready, we're got our, all cylinders are loaded. And if this doesn't happen till next year, then at least we'll know we'll be ready. Ms. Clerk?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen B is a resolution requesting New Orleans City Council, specifically the Transportation and Airport Committee, the New Orleans Aviation Board, the city of Kenner, specifically the mayor of Kenner and the at-large council members and the Jefferson Parish Council, specifically the council chairman and the council members from District Three and Four to conduct a joint meeting regarding the Louis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport for the purpose of considering the formation of a regional airport committee to discuss impacts to the surrounding communities during Hurricane Francine, including drainage and pump systems, and to determine if a compromise regarding the reconstitution of the New Orleans Aviation Board membership to a regional governance structure can be reached that minimizes future harm, danger, and offense caused by flooding to the residents of Jefferson Parish and Kenner while facilitating the growth and success of the Louis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport. I have a motion by councilmember McKenney, seconded by councilmember Wilmot. Councilmember McKenney?
Um, yes, thank you, Council Clerk. This is just, this legislation is just to start a dialogue for, you know, with the New Orleans City Council, between Jefferson Parish, the New Orleans City Council, as well as the city of Kenner. I think, you know, we have to have a starting point. I know yesterday, they, I saw on the news that members of the Transportation Board of the City Council said that they'd be open to, to, you know, starting a dialogue. So I think this is, you know, really important, something that we should all get together. And I, you know, I think that, you know, with the, with the previous resolution, everyone seems to be aligned to get this conversation started and, you know, really make sure that our residents, the residents of Kenner, the residents of Jefferson Parish that are impacted, that are impacted by the flooding, never have to go through those things again. And then also, you know, have a, a more open dialogue to, that Kenner and Jefferson Parish has more control of their own fate with regard to the airport, so, thanks.
Anyone else?
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item fifteen is acceptance- Item 15 is acceptance of contracts. Sure?
If I may, I just wanted to interject and make sure that on both these resolutions, that anybody who wants to endorse them or have their name appear on them as a submitter, if it's okay with Councilwoman McKenney, that we all add all the names, including the mayor and police chief, if they would like to join in as well.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay.
Yes, that's fine. I've already spoken to Council Clerk about it.
Yes, we've already reflected.
Everybody's added on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,748, an ordinance approving the use of a state contract for the purchase of bleachers at Musburne Lino Stadium. Have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney for one meeting deferral. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0 for one meeting deferral. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,773, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the lease agreement with U.S. Copy Incorporated for photocopy, fax, printing equipment, maintenance, parts, labor, and supplies for a term of three years, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $30,500 annually for the new not-to-exceed amount of $80,000 for all City of Kenner departments. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,774, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Galls LLC to supply uniforms, badges, and accessories for Kenner Fire Department in accordance with SEAL bid number 25-6585, and an amount not to exceed $60,000 annually for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Brennan.
Say, Chief, you want to chime in on this one here? I mean, I know, I'm familiar with Galls, but maybe everybody doesn't know that.
I'm sorry?
I'm familiar with Galls, but maybe other members might not.
Oh, yes, well, Galls, you know, we have to put the uniform out for bid every year. And we know the last few years, AP on the Aligned Highway had won the bid, but they didn't, they didn't get the bid this year. It's Galls, which is a pretty much internet, online service chain that won the bid, that's going to start supplying the uniforms for the fire department.
So, Galls was actually, was able to get them to put a bid in?
Yes.
Or y'all just took the price out the magazine, or?
No, 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 they actually, you know, it was an open bid process that they went through and they were the successful bidder for the uniform supply for the fire department.
Yeah, I know they have good quality uniforms and equipment and insignias, badges and things like that, so it's, it's good. I'm glad, I'm glad that we go onto a uniform that we always know we can go to and get things replaced.
Right, like I said, over the years, I've always bought uniforms and supplies through Galls. The only issue that I had with them winning the bid was the fact that we don't have a place that you could physically try on the uniforms that we're purchasing, that the guys would be purchasing. So, they're going to send us some samples for the guys to try on and make certain they get the right size, the right fit, before they actually order it online. And it's still part of the Quartermaster system, so they're keeping track of all that for us. So, it should be a good process for us going forward.
Good, that sounds great. Thanks, Chief.
See no further discussion. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,775, an ordinance authorizing a media monitoring subscription service agreement with TVEYES Incorporated, a sole-source provider in the amount of $3,600 annually for the Kenner Police Department. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat.
Chief, can you chime in on this one?
Chiming away. So, this is a, this source will allow us to gather intelligence through services of the global media, such as crime issues, national trends, policing issues, concerns across the globe, that will be able to be collected by us and stored in a database, so we can monitor what's going on across the country and be better prepared, as well as see how other agencies that, a lot of times are dealing with issues before they get, you know, get this far, are dealing with it. So, it's just a good source of information. We've been doing a trial and error on it, and it's proved to be beneficial in some, in some major areas.
Fantastic. Now, clerk.
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,776, an ordinance approving an agreement with Vanderbrook and Company LLC, certified public accountants for financial consulting, and an amount not to exceed $90,000 for the Kenner Police Department. Have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
Chief.
Uh, yeah, so this is our CPA, he's been around for about 40 years, and Elizabeth needs somebody to spar with, so he seems to fit the bill. So, you know, we don't have an in-house CFO. The Kenner Police Department's always depended on an outside contractor, and like I said, Mr. Vanderbrook's been doing this for, I'm the fourth chief that he's worked with. So, he's a valuable asset to us, and he's very reasonable at this cost.
And the information that he's given us, at least for me, over the years, have been fantastic, up to date, and to the point. I think it's great, great, so I'm with it.
Thank you. Ms. Herring, you have anything to add, or?
No, Will's wonderful to work with, so.
Is that on tape?
Clerk.
See no further discussion. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,778, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Husbands for Hire Construction LLC to provide guard rail maintenance in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6872, and an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Public Works Department. Have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. See no discussion. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,779, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with the firm of Meyer Engineers Limited regarding professional architectural and engineering services associated with the design, construction, administration, and supplementary services relating to a new two-story fire station 35 facility, and an amount not to exceed $855,377 for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilman Wilmot.
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, this rate, and it's not to exceed, I understand, but that's satisfactory to your belief?
It's a fixed fee, and, yeah, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not all design-related money, because we have a lot of supplementary services associated with this fee, which is survey and geotechnical, resident inspection. But yes, that's, that's pretty much a lump sum money, okay, that is going to be required to design the station, plus resident inspection services.
So, you're comfortable with that?
Yes, yeah, it's a fee that has been negotiated and is based on a construction cost in today's dollars of $8.5 million.
Thank, thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
Chief Morris? I just want a little, little tidbit. I know my time, Chief Cito was responsible building Station 37 and Station 36 back in the, back then. And he also had us to chime in, the firefighters, to have some kind of say of what the station looked like and things like that, what they wanted inside. Have you been to firefighters, any opportunity to kind of ask them what they want out of the fire station, what they need out of the fire station, or anything like that?
Yeah, not only with the fire station, but with the fire trucks that we're purchasing. We formed committees of the firemen that sit and design the fire trucks and the fire stations. So, we do have a committee in place that's working with Myers in order to design the station to suit what they feel is needed for them to live in these stations, because like I said, they live there. Basically, that's their home away from home, so to speak. So, let them design it the way they want it and what they're comfortable with.
Yeah, correct, that's, I mean, they're, they're one-third of their lobs. They're going to be at the fire station.
Yes.
So, I was just wondering, they could have some kind of opportunity?
I think he's on.
No, I'm not.
Chief ain't cheesy!
Yeah, yeah. The committee was chose by guys and, or firemen, firemen or firewomen who have some construction knowledge, maybe they do it inside or whatever that they're doing. So, it's, it's actually a pretty much, it's very productive. The conversations aren't, "We want six TVs." The conversations are, "We need lockers in these specific places, we need generators in these areas," and that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
George, thank you so much, my friend. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being one of my captains as a chief at the time. There's one guy right there I knew I could count on, medical and structural firefighting as well. Thank you all, chiefs.
All right.
See no further discussion. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,780, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson to provide funding for inclusive playground equipment and lighting at Megas Park, and an amount not to exceed $230,000. Have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Branigan?
Oh, yes, I just want to thank Councilwoman from Jefferson Parish, Rita Bohannon, for making this inclusion playground even better than what it was. The amount of people that use this park in the middle of Holly Heights subdivision, it's just unbelievable. And it's a beautiful park, and it caters to all children, which is an incredible thing. It was the first one in Kenner, and it's a beautiful place for all children to enjoy. And I thank her for that.
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 13,781, an ordinance accepting the quote received from Serpents' Conveyor Corporation to purchase emergency shutdown switches and miscellaneous parts for the sludge conveyor system, in the amount of $5,498 for the wastewater department. Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15J is summary ordinance number 13,782, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from USA Blue Book to purchase one all-weather sample bundle in accordance with electronic bid 25-2999, in the amount of $9,446.60 for the Department of Wastewater. Have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 13,783, an ordinance approving an agreement with Prince Dump Truck Services LLC for work relating to clearing and grubbing of land, grading/ spreading of materials, and excavation on an as-needed basis within an amount not to exceed $125,000 for various departments. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15L is summary ordinance number 13,784, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Romelli Janitorial Service Incorporated to provide grass cutting and debris removal, in accordance with bid number 25-6876, and an amount not to exceed $165,125 for the Inspection and Code Enforcement Department. Have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance authorizing the City of Kenner to hold a public auction on May 8, 2025, to sell surplus movable property no longer needed for public purpose, and setting the terms and disposition of the proceeds from the sale. Item 16B is an ordinance amending ordinance 11,622 to correct the name of the subdivision. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Grimco Incorporated to furnish and install one GrafTech FC 9,000-140 plotter or equal for traffic division, in accordance with electronic bid 25-2159, and an amount not to exceed $7,526.14 for the General Services Department. Item 16D is an ordinance authorizing utilization of Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office Contract Number 25-MAR-1201, with vision uniforms incorporated, to furnish uniforms on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the life of the agreement for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Parton Roofing LLC to replace the roofs of the Kenner Police Headquarters and Jail Facility, in accordance with SEAL bid number 25-6868, in an amount not to exceed $454,400 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Roofing Solutions LLC to replace the roof of the Kenner Police Training Facility, in accordance with SEAL bid number 25-6867, in an amount not to exceed $155,000 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16G is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Boe Brothers Construction Company LLC to provide asphalt street maintenance and small jobs in accordance with SEAL bid number 25-6871, and an amount not to exceed $3 million annually for the Public Works Department. Item 16H is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Coburn's Supply to provide sewer clamps, couplings, PVC, et cetera, on an as-needed basis in accordance with SEAL bid number 24-6857, and an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16I is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse Turbine Pump of the effluent dock at the wastewater treatment plant by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC, in the amount of $33,900 for the wastewater department. Item 16J is an ordinance ratifying an emergency replacement of the Hydromatic HMPC Pump Number One at the boat launch lift station by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC, in the amount of $9,112 for the wastewater department. Item 16K is an ordinance accepting the quote received from Innovative Flow Solutions to install one road torque actuator for the wastewater treatment plant dumping pit, in the amount of $9,450 for the wastewater department. Item 16L is an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Messine Inc. to provide disaster meal service in accordance with request proposal number 25-6873. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilmember Branigan?
Oh, yes, just want to let everyone know, Saturday, we have the reopening of Megas Park with the new equipment that is on the right side of the concrete ramp that goes up and down. It's either four or five pieces of equipment. I think one is not installed because it's going to be late. There are also, an Easter egg hunt will take place at 2:00 p.m., so the ribbon cutting's at noon, and hopefully, everybody comes out and enjoys the festivities that are being put on at Megas Park. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm going to try to answer your question on property taxes. 2022 is $127,485.60, '23 is $275,120.83, and last year is $743,691.04. Yeah, they'll, they'll pay it before it goes to tax sale. So, they know, most of them know how to play the game, where you see '22 is gone in September of this year, and that $127 will be, they'll start paying before it goes to a tax sale, so.
Thank you, sir. Also, I'd like to remind our parents out there that softball, baseball, registration, and participation is going on right now for all ages. Seven, eights, nine, and tens, we definitely could use a few more ballplayers out there. Skill level is anywhere from zero to 10. It doesn't matter, we have some great coaches out there. If your child is lacking, we can bring them up to a different level, for sure. Next tryout for seven and eights will be on Monday at 6:15 at Musburne Lino, Field Number Two. And- Field Number Two, and nine and tens will be Tuesday, Thursday, I believe, there, Charles, is that something I'm right? An hour after that? Okay, on Monday and Wednesday as well. Please, we could use a few more to get a team, to another team made up, and get our recreation department back to where we need to be. Does anybody else would like to address? Mr. Ryan?
Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider are removed from a table disposition, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Ryan, sir, podium, yours.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Nugent, fifty-four forty-four, Earl Green, District Three. I'm here today to talk about some of the recent developments and reporting concerning the Esplanade Mall property. First off, I'd like to thank the council for its decision to deny the current owner's request to subdivide the property. This was absolutely the right call. There should be no subdivision of the property until there's a full development plan in place for the entire property, and said plan is ready to be executed. Anything else is just an attempt to parcel out one of Kenner's greatest assets for some quick money. That being said, the owner's original proposal for a lifestyle center, including a mix of retail, dining, residential, and hospitality, has a lot of practical merit. It's consistent with the results of the city-sponsored study that was conducted just a few years ago, and frankly, it's what most people would like to see. The developer has been criticized for a lack of progress, but let's face some facts. The brick-and-mortar retail market has seen most of its major players scaling back in recent years, and new openings are somewhat limited. It's very difficult, if not impossible, to secure the kind of capital needed for the proposed redevelopment, without a major anchor tenant willing to sign on. And that brings me to my next point, specifically Ikea. Apparently, they've expressed an interest in the property, which is great. What doesn't make any sense to me are the reports I've heard about the current ownership structure of the property complicating Ikea's potential involvement. The dubious matter of Macy's unpaid tax bill aside, all a reasonable person has to do to realize that the supposed ownership issue doesn't make any sense is to go out there and look at the size of the rest of the property. But if that's not enough, we can talk numbers. The contiguous Esplanade property, not including the portions with separate ownership, is over two point six million square feet. The mall building itself, not including the anchors, is over nine hundred thousand square feet across two levels, with a footprint of over four hundred fifty thousand square feet. So, any idea what the footprint of a typical Ikea is? It's only three hundred thousand square feet. Not to mention that if space were really at a premium, they could elevate the store to accommodate additional parking underneath. That's how the Ikea I used to visit in my college days was built, and it would probably save them a bundle on their flood insurance, too. Now, beyond the absurdity of the available space issue is the idea of somehow acquiring the parcels belonging to the still-operating anchor tenants. For one, I'm pretty sure Dillard's is rather happy with what they've got going on there, and a merely certain Target has no intention of selling. And two, if someone's trying to push the notion of giving up Target, Dillard's, and Kenner's last remaining movie theater for a furniture store and some Swedish meatballs, I don't think I have to tell you that that's gonna be a non-starter for most of your constituents. On the other hand, we've got a current owner and developer sitting in one corner with a great plan for a lifestyle center that's mostly consistent with what the citizens of Kenner would like to see here. They just need a big anchor tenant to secure additional investment. And in the other corner, we have a potential huge anchor tenant who seems to be having trouble figuring out how to fit themselves on the site. To me, it sounds like a match made in heaven, and I pray to God that there are people from the city and from Jedco working behind the scenes to bring these parties together. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Nugent, as always, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Ms. Clerk? Beans adjourned.